Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our virtual public traffic meeting. I'm delighted to be here. Supervisor Natoli and I are excited to have this conversation with you. I'm remembering a couple of months ago, back to before March, when we were making plans for this meeting in the community, and then COVID happened, and we were a little bit derailed. But I want to thank all of you for your patience as we've kind of learned how to adjust to the new meeting formats, and we're excited to be here this evening. I have a couple of opening comments, and I'm sure Supervisor Natoli will also want to say a few words as soon as I'm done. Tonight, our presenters are going to be Todd Smith from Sacramento County Planning, who's going to talk about Jackson Highway master plans; Matt Darrow from SAC DOT, who's talking about transportation planning in Jackson Highway and the master plan traffic analysis; Lupe Rodriguez from Sacramento Department of Transportation will be talking about Scott Road; and Derek Minima, CEO of Capital Southeast Connector JPA, who'll be talking about the Connector Expressway. I also want to thank Lieutenant Commander Robin Johnson with the ESEC CHP, who's been a wonderful partner for us. The CHP has really gone out of their way to help us on Scott Road. It's a road that's hard to, it's really hard to manage and enforce on a road that with narrow, you know, no shoulders, and the CHP's been a good partner in helping keep an extra, actually partnering with us to work with us on those challenges out at Scott Road and in other areas. And I want to thank Matt Hedges and Vance Girard and my District 4 staff, who've worked really hard to pull all this together, and who'll be helping us field questions this evening and so forth. So, since the very first day that I got elected as your county supervisor, we've been having this conversation around, you know, the traffic, the population growth as it's heading out toward Rancho Marietta, Scott Road, and the safety issues on Scott Road. How are we going to manage the infrastructure growth as the population and as new developments happen? And the concerns, and I know there's a lot of different concerns. I just want you to know that presentations are intended to try to keep them fairly brief this evening, so that there's plenty of time for Q and A, because the biggest, most, the most value we'll get is from that conversation we're going to have. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Supervisor Don Natoli, who's with us this evening. I can't see Don's face, and I hope he's still with us. Supervisor Natoli, are you still here?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to get the video to come up. Can you hear me, Sue?
I can hear you, and I-
Here we go.
You got it? Okay.
I think we got it, so. And I'm sorry, I missed your comments. I don't know, it just went, in fact, I got some help in here, and we got back online. So, anyway, I'm sure you appropriately welcomed everyone, so.
I did. I basically went through, let everyone know who would be presenting. You'll hear them as they come on, and I knew you'd want to say a couple of words, since you've been in this way longer than I have, and then we'll just go right to our presentations, and then we'll go into Q and A.
Okay. Well, thanks Supervisor Frost, and certainly to all of our presenters and all those who've tuned in this evening, and pleased to join my colleague Supervisor Frost. I, you know, see the title, it's Rancho Marietta Transportation Town Hall Meeting. I assume there are others who have joined us from surrounding areas, but certainly to focus in on, you know, some of the traffic issues and transportation issues, but certainly some of the plans for the future. And again, I know you've got a fine panel of folks here this evening, who I think can field just about any question that would come up, but I'm pleased to join and certainly recognize that as we go forward in the years to come, planning certainly in the Jackson Corridor, but the mobility and connectivity for Rancho Marietta, for our communities in the foothills, as well as obviously our communities throughout the county and areas north, south, east, and west, is very, very important for commerce, for movement of people and goods, and just for all the daily activities that we depend upon in our mobility profile. So with that, I'll certainly acknowledge the presenters, and thanks Supervisor Frost. And I'll turn it back to you, Sue, for the presentations. Thanks.
Great. And so I think this evening, we're starting with Todd Smith with Sacramento County Planning, who's going to-
Yes, so, welcome, everybody. Todd Smith here, Sacramento County Planning and Environmental Review. I am the principal planner over our office's long-range planning and master plans team. We've been working with the applicants in the Jackson Highway corridor, probably the better part, well, more than 10 years for some of them. If you could advance to the first slide, that would be great. So just to give everybody the geographic context of the area in question, we're talking about roughly from South Wad Avenue on the west end to Sunrise on the east end. And there's four adjacent master plans here that are fairly substantial in acreage and size and development potential. And so we had coordinated early on in the process with our Department of Transportation and the applicants to put together a comprehensive analysis of transportation issues that Matt Darrow is going to get into in a little bit. But just wanted to give you guys a context of the area in question. In terms of potential development, these are projects that if they're all approved, they will not build out immediately. They'll probably, most likely, build out over a period of decades. And it is really important that we get this right, the transportation aspect in particular. Go ahead to the next one, please. There it is. There's the graphic showing the geographic area. So just so you have a geographic context, that's the area we're talking about for the transportation analysis of these four projects. Go ahead to the next one. And there's a lot more details on our website. The link is there on the screen, and we can send that out as an after-meeting report as well. You can take the opportunity to sign up for email updates. We have a pretty substantial gov delivery list that we promise not to spam you. It's just to keep folks who are interested informed on what's going on with each project, one of the hit major milestones, like EIRs coming out, or individual projects going to hearings. So, before I turn it over to Matt, I just wanted to pause and see if there's any questions so far.
I also want to chime in. If you have questions, go ahead and throw them up in the chat, and we can transmit them over. If you're on voicemail, on the voice call, you can email supervisorfrost@saccounty.net, and we can get your questions in that way. You also don't have to ask your questions right away. You can save them till the end if you'd like. We want to make it as convenient as possible for you.
So one of the questions I just saw pop up is, what are the major project, or where are the major projects and their individual stages of the planning process? That's a good question. So I'll go back to the four projects. So they're starting on the west end of the corridor, the West Jackson Highway Master Plan. That one is still in the preparation of the environmental impact report stage. There are some technical studies that are being worked on by the applicant team. We have not published a draft EIR for that one. Jackson Township, which is the one to the east of West Jackson. Jackson Township, we have published the draft EIR. Did that in September last year. We are working on responses to comments and some technical details with the applicant of that project. The New Bridge, sorry, back up to Jackson Township. That one has not gone to a formal hearing on the project at the Planning Commission yet, but we did do a hearing on the draft EIR at the Planning Commission back in October, the end of October of 2019. The New Bridge Project, which is immediately to the east of that, is, we published the draft EIR back in 2018. Project went to the Planning Commission for consideration in December of 2019, and we are anticipating a hearing at the Board of Supervisors for that one in the very near future. Mather South, specific plan, which is immediately north of New Bridge, was approved by the Board of Supervisors back in January of this year. So that's generally where they're at as far as the master plan entitlements. There will be subsequent entitlements where things like rezones or subdivision maps for the individual development pieces move forward. Those come at a later point in the process.
Well, thank you, Todd. Let's go ahead and move on to Matt Darrow. Matt is with Transportation and Planning, and he's going to be talking about the Jackson Highway Master Plan and the traffic analysis.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Can everybody, can you hear me, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So my name's Matt Darrow, as Matt Hedges just said. I'm with Department of Transportation. I am a principal civil engineer, and my purview is transportation planning and development. So essentially, I work with development as it comes in, and help identify mitigation measures that developers, as they develop, need to implement. So that's who I have, who I am. I have two things that I want to kind of go over tonight. The first is really an overview of transportation planning at SAC County and a high level of how it works. And then the second is to talk about briefly the traffic study for the Jackson Corridor, master plan, and then a summary of the transportation mitigation strategy. And I figure the best place to start by doing that is on the slide that's on your screen. That's the Sacramento County General Plan, showing essentially the transportation network that's planned for the county. It basically contains the major roadways, both existing and planned, in the county, and it's developed with a traffic model, and it takes, it really takes into account the existing and planned land uses that are in the general plan for the county. It helps us size the roads based on traffic generated by that anticipated land use. And it's really, it's how we size roads in the county, or how we plan for certain road sizes in the county. It's really our quote-unquote roadmap, which is probably where that term came from back in the day. It's updated about once every 10 years or so. Things change as time goes, obviously, so this is the document that's good for about 10 years, and it updates every decade. So it's really the general plan, and it's really the quote-unquote "what" in terms of the roads that need to be built and widened around the county. So now let's talk about really the how the roads get built or widened in the county. There's really two fundamental ways. The first is as a capital project. And the capital project is more a project that the county would go out and deliver. The county would identify various roadway needs, and it creates a project priority list of all those needs. And when that particular roadway need elevates to the top of the list, we attempt, as a department, to secure funds, design that facility, and then go out and construct that project. So if you look at the slide, item one is really some examples in our county of capital projects that we have. Some of the things that you've probably seen over the years, just to name a few. The Bradshaw Road widening from 2 to 4, sort of near our office, that's kind of along this corridor in question that we're going to talk about in a minute. That was a capital project. The Wad Avenue Bridge widening across the American River, that's a capital project. The Hazelwood Avenue widening that's north of US 50 that's ongoing. Those are capital projects, and you could even say the Capital Southeast Connector in a way is a capital project, even though that one's more of a multi-jurisdictional effort. Then, the other fundamental way that roads get built in our county is on the backs of development projects, quite frankly. So a development project comes in, a traffic study is required as part of the California Environmental Quality Act, or commonly known as CEQA. Traffic impacts and improvements are identified in that analysis. And then a developer's essentially required to build or widen the roads to support that particular development. So item two on the slide talks about a couple of areas that are going in the county. North Vineyard Station, Murieta North, that's out in the neck of the woods of the folks that we're talking to this evening. Murieta Gardens, those are names that should be familiar to you out there. And then, of course, the Jackson Corridor master plans. So next slide. So now, so now let's talk about the traffic study for the Jackson Corridor master plan. I won't spend too much time, and I'm trying to keep this high level, but Todd already addressed, if you look from left to right, there are four plan areas in the corridor. West Jackson in red, Jackson Township in yellow, Mather South in pink, and in blue is New Bridge. And then for reference, if you look around this figure, on the top of the figure, sort of following the dotted lines, that's Highway 50, essentially. If you look to the right side of the figure, that dotted line follows Grantline Road. On the bottom of the figure, and essentially, we get down to Elk Grove, and that's generally Calvine Road. And on the left side of the figure, we get into the city of Sacramento. And so we scoped this traffic study, and let me back up. The opaque color that sort of overlays everything that's inside the dotted lines, that is the scope of the traffic study. Those are the facilities that were analyzed as part of the traffic analysis for this project. And we didn't really do that in a vacuum. We worked with the consultants to identify the scope of the study in terms of how far away from the study area we needed to go, and that's all based on traffic that's anticipated to come and go from the project. It's also in coordination with reaching out, talking to the city of Sacramento, the city of Pulsum, Raja Kodo, and Elk Grove, as well as Caltrans, and even the Connector staff to talk about, hey, everybody's on the same page, this is the area that we need to analyze. So next slide. So there's hundreds and hundreds of pages of the traffic analysis for the Jackson Corridor. I'm not even going to attempt to try to go through each one, but I thought it would be a good idea to just take a sample, sample page out of that document, and then just kind of point out the fact, really, the study evaluated the transportation impacts for that master plan, including roadway segments and intersections, such as facilities that are on this graphic. And this slide just shows an example from that study, showing some of the impacted and new roads that are going to be built as part of this development by the developers. And then that's what those arrows show, and then, Vance, if you hit the next button, it also will point out some existing roads that will need to be widened. I'm not trying to throw out a comprehensive list of everything here, I'm just trying to give you some examples of sort of what is in a traffic study. So if we go to the next slide, I thought it really would be a good idea to show some of the highlights of a few of the improvements that we expect to see out of the traffic study, and keeping in mind that this development we're talking about is probably a development that will develop, if approved, out over several decades, a long time. I mean, it will take a long time. So when we, when we highlight some of the improvements, I want to first point out, I think it's very important to point out, that this development, we anticipate about $500 million in roadway improvements that will be coming on the back of this development occurring. And I thought I'd pull out some of the highlights in a couple of categories. So I've listed out some of the road widens and extensions that we'd expect to see. I'll just hit a couple of them. This is by no means a full list of them all, but we'll see improvements on Eagles Nest, of course, Jackson, Kiefer, Sunrise, South Wad, Elder Creek, Excelsior, Zip and Dell Road. We'll see intersection improvements. I wanted to point out a couple of them here, Jackson at Sunrise, Jackson at Bradshaw, Jackson at Grantline, you know, Florida, Excelsior. Will be requiring the coordination of technology, coordinated signal technology along the Jackson Highway. Essentially, there's technology that exists now that allows signalized intersections to essentially talk to one another, to allow platoons of traffic to move through. If you're coming through a corridor, heading east or west, you should be able to hit a green light and make it mostly through the corridor because of this technology, as opposed to hitting a red, getting a green, to hit the next red, all that. So we're going to require that in the corridor. And then lastly, I wanted to point out that we created a function, a roadway functionality category for this development. So inside that steady area of analysis, there are several two-lane roads that are maybe sub-12-foot wide lanes and appropriate shoulder widths. So if volumes of traffic from the development get up to the point of 6,000 ADP, we're going to make the developer require widening to a two-lane standard of 12-foot lanes and five or six-foot shoulders for safety. So that's just an overview of some of the things that we expect to see as the decades roll, if this thing moves forward. Next slide, please.
Matt, if I could, this is Don Natoli.
Sure, Don.
Just back to that slide, I don't know if you can go back, but it might be worthy of note, because it's, some of these are not dependent upon development approvals. For example, Florida, Excelsior Road already is contemplated to be improved with some of the previous development approvals back in North Vineyard and such. And likewise, maybe not the full improvement, but we know there's an issue right now at Jackson Highway at Bradshaw Road with the right turn movement that westbound and northbound. And those are things you're working on even in the intervening, so, I mean, development will contribute to some of these major projects of, you know, full widenings and, you know, major re-dos of the intersection. But there are things that are already in the works that, you know, recognize traffic patterns, previously approved development, and just go along with, I think, some of our other plans that dovetail on this. I just, I didn't want to get over your presentation, but I just wanted to point out, not everything has to wait for some development, some of the stuff's already being contemplated.
That's absolutely right, Don. Thanks for bringing that up, and don't worry about jumping in, I appreciate that. In fact, it gives me an opportunity to say that you're absolutely right. I can tell you, I know specifically, I'm not in the design side, as you know, but I know specifically the intersection of Jackson and Bradshaw, there's a capital project. And Bryce says, that's really a different way than development to get improvements. And there is a capital project in the works right now that is looking for delivery in the summer of 2022, that at Jackson and Bradshaw, that would include dual lefts in all four approaches, so each leg of the intersection, and separate right turn lanes in each leg of the intersection, and north and south, three through lanes each direction on Bradshaw, and four through lanes total, so two in each direction on Jackson. And that's in the works, you're right. That's not waiting for development. This, this, this list is more a list of things that is identified in the traffic study that this particular development has some responsibility of funding and some, in some cases, delivering that we would, that we would expect. And you're right, there are lots of times there's development that occurs, and there are overlaps of responsibility between different plan areas as well. But, but yes, you're correct.
And Matt, if I, just one other thing.
Yeah.
I know that last year and the year before, there were a couple of bad accidents at Eagles Nest at Jackson Highway, or at least close to the intersection. And in the event that things occur that either are safety-related and/or weren't anticipated relative to people who cut through traffic and so forth, there is flexibility, I think, to the point built in here, too, even with other projects, but in working with Caltrans along the Jackson Corridor, but with intersecting streets, that in the event that, you know, there's a real safety issue, things can be advanced as it relates to signalization or other, other improvements that would facilitate safe movements, and certainly the through movements, you know, that intersect with Jackson Highway.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you're right. Yeah, safety always, always can be a project. So, so shall I keep going?
Actually, there's a few questions. I think it'd be good to maybe go ahead and jump in and ask them before we go too much further.
Okay.
I got a question from Jim Vale, who asked about, why does the traffic study stop at Grantline and ignores the daily traffic commuting from areas to the east?
Okay, that's a good question, I can answer that. So when you scope a traffic study, you, we have, we're able to run a model, it's a, actually, it's our consultant that runs the model to see where the traffic from the land use that's in, contemplated as part of the development, will come and go on the various roads. And you're able to see basically how the traffic from that development and to that development disperses, if you will, on the network. And then the further out you go, essentially, from, from the core of that development, as you would expect, the traffic volumes drop down to such a point that they, there's really negligible impact on facilities. And so that's really where you essentially draw the line. And in this particular case, when we did that sensitivity and select link analysis in the model, traffic got to Grantline and then mostly went north and south, to the, to the extent that, doesn't mean no traffic would go east of that or come from east of that by any means, but it means that the amount of traffic would be negligible in terms of creating an impact based on the county's guidelines for what constitutes an impact.
Excellent, thanks.
I would add to that, Matt, this is Todd Smith, that when we, when we do that, it's done not with an intent to find a boundary that's predetermined. What we do, or what the traffic engineers do, is input all the surrounding land uses as well as the projects, and see what the model tells us. So we're not trying to artificially constrain anything.
Correct.
And, yeah.
Got another question from Bruce Stout, who asked, will roadway improvements be done before developers start their build-out?
So, that's a good question, Bruce. Thank you. I, I, my next slide is going to talk about transportation mitigation strategy. So I would love to say that I'm getting to that. However, I, my conversation is trying to keep it pretty high level, that, that I think even if I do show that slide, you're still going to ask the same question, and the answer is yes. And I'm, and when I get to that slide, I'm going to reference some folks to the workshop on the Board Agenda website that we did last summer, if you need more detail. So maybe I'll save that to the next slide. But the answer is yes. The intent is to have development occur and improvements absolutely keep up, based on this transportation mitigation strategy that we've developed with this, with this development.
Great. Let me keep these questions rolling. We got a question from John Gedney, who asks, why doesn't Slide 8 show SR16 segments as significant and unavoidable? Caltrans staff recommended preserving adequate right-of-way for future widenings needed. SAC County determined that to be significant and unavoidable impacts in the development EIRs.
I could take that one.
Go ahead, Todd.
So the purpose of Slide 8 is not to be a, everything that's in the traffic study or the EIRs, the comment is correct, or the question is correct, that in the EIR, in the traffic study, we did identify those significant and unavoidable impacts, and we, we will be preserving right-of-way for future widening. We're not going to be constraining to a certain right-of-way based on the existing condition. We're going to be doing the long-term planning for future development and the roadway right-of-way based on the general plan that Matt showed earlier, which is, I think, a future ultimate six-lane facility.
Yes. Yeah, thanks for that, Todd. Yes, the general plan that we showed earlier is an ultimate six-lane Jackson Corridor from Grantline West, and from Grantline East, our general plan tells us it needs to ultimately be a four-lane. I'm not sure that you can zoom in, but if you really looked at this closely, or if you went to the county website and found the general plan link, which I'm sure we can provide, you'll see that orange represents a six-lane facility and blue represents a four. So that's what it's planned for down the road. And Todd said exactly the right thing, of course, because that's Todd. So that's what it's planned for down the road. And Todd said exactly the right thing, of course, because that's Todd. The slide that we, that I flashed up wasn't the be all and end all. It was just taken from the middle of the document.
Thanks. We got a couple more questions that have come in the meantime. One from Steve who asks, are the developers' access to Jackson Highway going to be limited? I would hope the design is for limiting access to Jackson Highway from each development. We need to limit intersections to not slow travel times from the east.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're definitely treating Jackson as, you know, an ultimate six lane facility. And we try to, because we have the ability at this point in time, and we're not, we're not a six lane road that exists with all kinds of access like, you know, maybe other places in the county, we do have the ability to limit access points in and out. In fact, left turn access out of, out of development adjacent to Jackson will only occur at signalized locations. Otherwise, we'll be talking about right in, right outs. But yes, we are absolutely going to try and limit that, that access as, as things go. And that was contemplated several years ago when these plans were put together. Yes.
So Rob asks, what is the expected population increase between the four development areas? Also, is there a timeline of expected population increase?
Todd, I'll leave that to you.
Yes. So, population wise, we're talking about in the neighborhood of 27,000 dwelling units. So if you use an average of, you know, two to three persons per household, it's roughly 50,000 to 60,000 residents. And the timeline of that is really dependent on market conditions and the actual build out of the projects if they are approved. So typically, specific plans, master plans on an individual basis are looking at a 20 to 30 year build out. When you put four of them together, it's really hard to predict what the market will bear in terms of infrastructure costs and house prices and the long-term absorption of all the development. It could be multiple decades.
Yeah, great. I'm going to ask one more question and then we'll keep going with, with, with the presentation. And this one's from Stan Van Velek who asks, will Jackson Highway be expanded to four lanes, two lanes each direction from Bradshaw to East County Line to allow for more efficient traffic movement to absorb these additional vehicles?
So I'll, I'll go back, I'll harken back to the general plan slide that's still up there. Thanks, Vance. So, so you've got two, two, I'll try to keep it succinct. You've got two ways to answer that. The general plan tells us that eventually Jackson Road from Grantline West towards the city of Sacramento will ultimately need to be a six lane facility. So eventually, the road will be widened to three lanes in each direction. It also tells us that from Grantline East to it looks like maybe around Scott Road will ultimately need to be a four lane facility. So that's two lanes in each direction. And then from that point to the county line, it looks to be back to a two lane facility. Now that just means that's what we ultimately plan for. That means when developments come in and have impacts, they also through CEQA identify what they are going to be required to do. And that's really what happened in the traffic analysis for the Jackson corridor. That is identifying what they're going to be required to do. So I want to separate and say that yes, eventually there will be four lane widening east of Grantline. And in fact, as developed, I don't want to talk about other developments, but there are developments that are coming in out, or at least being proposed out in the vicinity of Rancho Marietta that will have to analyze their impacts on those facilities and, and will have what we call nexus. Or basically, there'll be a direct correlation between traffic generated from some of those projects to the facilities adjacent to those projects, which would be state route 16 east of Grantline. So, so ultimately, those roads will be widened. It's just how we get there.
Great. Let's keep going with the presentation on your end, Matt. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I think I was, keep, keep going to transportation mitigation.
Oh, and I, I realize that there's some questions that were yet to be asked, but I'm still, I'm writing them all down, everybody. I didn't forget your questions.
How can I submit a question? I'm curious.
Chat box? Are you on a phone call or are you on chat?
No, I'm, I'm online and I'd like to ask a question.
There's a chat box you can click on, on the top right.
Okay, very well.
All right, keep going, Matt. Thanks.
You bet. Let's see, I left off talking about some of the highlights of the improvements we'd anticipate seeing if this particular development moves forward, which took us now to, back to kind of the transportation planning aspect of, of this. So earlier we talked about sort of the what and the how the roadway improvements occur. The transportation mitigation strategy really defines the when and the where those improvements will be made. So if you look at the slide, we'll be doing dynamic implementation. We'll be assigning improvements for this development based on each development increment's impact. So what I mean by that is, you know, you've got this huge development, but obviously it's not going to come down and develop all at once. It's going to happen over decades in my estimation. But you might have a development increment that comes in with 250 units. And so we will assign improvements as that development increment comes in, and we will do that dynamically. And we're going to be doing microanalysis of each development increment as it comes in. We'll be identifying the highest priority improvements related to that particular increment. And we'll be assigning those improvements based on the size of that development increment. And we will, and this kind of went to a question from the previous slide, we will be requiring the developer to construct those improvements coincident with, with development. And we're going to do that using what we call a dynamic implementation tool that we're developing. It's based on traffic modeling for the Jackson corridor developments. And it, the inputs that we're going to put into this model will, will be the development increment size and, and the location of where that development occurs. And then the outputs that will come out of that dynamic implementation tool will be the identification of what roadway segments and intersections will need to require the developer to, to construct. And so basically, in a nutshell, I wanted to circle back. Yes, the county will be requiring the various developments to make those improvements as they develop in the Jackson corridor master plan. And I mentioned previous slide, when we got that question, they wanted to direct, this is kind of a, there's a lot of detail. And if you're a type of person that really wants to know the details of this, I want to point you to a workshop that occurred at the board on July 23 of 2019. We gave, Planning and Transportation gave a workshop on the transportation mitigation strategy that we are developing for the Jackson corridor. So if you go, if you're able to go to the board website and to the July 23, 2019 date, I believe the item was at about 2:15 that afternoon. You should be able to find the video of that hearing. And you can kind of see some more of the details. And then there'll be the packet that was part of the board package. There's lots of details in there. And at the end of this presentation, I'm going to flat, we'll flash up all of our emails. And you can always feel free to email me and get in touch with me if you have any questions about anything you saw there. And I'd be happy to have a more detailed discussion there. So next slide. And all, and all, and all pictures worth a thousand words. So I thought the best way to really illustrate this point was with this picture. And Vance, as you can go click through it with me. What I want to do is just say, if this yellow dot represents a development increment in the Jackson corridor, and it happens to be in West Jackson in this example. And if you hit the button again, we'd expect the, these arrows roughly to represent the traffic. And click it one more time. What's, what we're going to expect is that our dynamic implementation tool will tell us that improvements in the corridor need to occur roughly in this general location. But if instead that development increment came in, let's say, and made itself further north and east of the first example, we would expect the travel, traffic to, to use these roadways instead, as represented by the yellow arrows. And therefore, we'd expect our dynamic implementation tool to tell us that we would want improvements that would handle that development, the traffic from that development increment. And we would expect improvements at this location. So that's essentially what our transportation mitigation strategy does without getting into all the tech, technical aspects of it, which we can do. But this is it in a nutshell. And then there's just two more slides before I at least stop presenting. I finally wanted to just point out, just anecdotally, that there's two trip reduction strategies that are associated with the Jackson corridor master plan. Go ahead and just turn all the layers on here, Vance. It's these three highlighted corridors essentially represent a transit network that's being required with the traffic, or I'm sorry, with the development in this corridor. We expect to have a transit network that when bill that occurs will include 1605, basically 16,500 or so boardings a day, which means we're reducing the traffic in the conventional traveling in a car by that many people getting on and off buses. You can see that this corridor, if you, if you ever look close enough, would connect this, the light rail station at Sunrise to ultimately the light rail station at Watt. And it would join points in between with transit stops throughout these plan areas. And then one final slide is just the second trip reduction strategy that's included. This slide gets really busy. So if you just turn all the layers on, this is the trail network. The green represents regional trails that are generally 12 foot trails throughout the plan areas. And the red identifies conventional trails that are roughly 10 foot trails. They're all class one type trails that are off-street that encourage alternative modes of travel in the form of biking and walking by linking all the residential communities in these plan areas with schools, parks, transit centers, employment and commercial areas. So these last two examples are just slides that illustrate that we're not just hoping everybody's going to jump in a car. There are strategies included that, that we're requiring of the development to reduce those trips to the extent possible by providing these types of facilities. So that concludes my, my presentation. I'm here obviously for questions.
Excellent. Thanks, Matt. I'm going to, there's one question that's been asked in a bunch of different ways. And so I'm going to get that question to you. And then we're going to move on to Lupe. And I've written down the questions and we'll get back afterwards, assuming, I want to make sure we have enough time and we're flowing, but I'm writing down everything. So Matt, this is a four-part question from John Merchant. And I'm going to ask it all at once because I emailed it to you. So I know that you already know them all. But just for the sake of everybody else, the four questions are. It starts with a statement. The statement is, there was an agreement to place control of 7.5 miles of Highway 16 under the control of Sacramento County so that this inter-county regional road could be converted to a local urbanized roadway. Last year, Sacramento County turned responsibility of this roadway back to Caltrans. Four questions are, why did Sacramento do this? Is Sacramento County aware of Caltrans' intent to piecemeal these roadways? How can Sacramento County prevent a fragmented approach to this development when the county doesn't control it? And does Sacramento County believe that the urbanization of the roadway will require an environmental impact report prior to the implementation?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know there's a long history of this project. It's not just been around in the last couple of months. It's been around for many years. So there's, there's history. I, I can tell you that, I'll, I'll just answer this by saying, I know that there's no pursuit of any relinquishment that currently exists. The county's trying to ask Caltrans for relinquishment at this time. I, I believe that that did occur in the past, but that's been wiped away. We're not, we're not pursuing that. Our plan, the county's plan is to require and condition the development to have to go through the encroachment permit process for any improvements that do exist or do have to occur on Jackson corridor and following Caltrans standards, or go through any sort of exception process that we have to do. And I, and in terms of an EIR, I would just say the EIR is prepared by, the EIR for this development has been prepared by the county because we're the responsible agency. And I don't know if Todd has anything.
Yeah. I would, I would add to that, that the fourth part of the question about the EIR, if, if Caltrans were to relinquish control to the local jurisdictions, Caltrans would be what's called a lead agency for CEQA purposes. And they would need to prepare the appropriate environmental document for that action. And any future, you know, specific capital project improvement, such as for widening or intersection improvements, what have you, that would also go through additional environmental review, which could be in EIR, it could be a lesser document depending on the types of impacts that are, that are on each segment.
All right. Thank you. There's quite a bit more questions that have come in for you, Matt, but we'll be here all night if I ask them all, I think. And so we're going to save you until the end. And I'm going to call in Lupe Rodriguez. Lupe works for Department of Transportation and he's going to talk to everybody about Scott Road. Let's make sure we have him unmuted.
So can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Lupe.
Okay. So, good evening. My name is Lupe Rodriguez and I'm the manager for the Operations and Maintenance Division with the Department of Transportation. So basically what we do is we maintain the infrastructure once some of these developments come in and build it. And so that's what our responsibilities are. So in general, our operations and maintenance divisions maintains over 500 lane miles of roadways in the incorporated county. We have 100, about 100,000 traffic signs that we maintain, approximately 500 traffic signals, 20,000 street lights. So there's a lot of infrastructure, I guess, what I'm trying to say that we maintain because the county is a large county that, so we have quite a bit of infrastructure out there. And so to talk a little bit more, more about Scott Road, you know, as we all know, it's about an eight mile rural roadway with many turns and hills that becomes a challenge, right? And I think it was mentioned earlier, it has minimal shoulder width or no shoulder widths in the some of the, most of these areas. And this is one of the main routes from Rancho Marietta to US 50, City of Tulsa, Melrose, Rattle County. And so it is a main route out there where for, out to that direction for the Rancho Marietta folks and maybe some of the other folks in more rural areas out here. And so a couple of main topics that I wanted to discuss today was the pavement maintenance and also the traffic concerns that we've been hearing. And so first of all, I'll go over the pavement maintenance side of things. And as maybe what we, what we're seeing right now is unfortunately, the, you know, the pavement condition on Scott Road are very similar. Or maybe this condition on Scott Road is probably a little bit better than on many streets in the unincorporated county right now. As I mentioned, we maintain a prob, approximately, we're over 500 lane miles of roadway. And historically through the years, we have not received the amount or sufficient funding for the pavement maintenance side of things. So for this reason, what we're seeing now is that many of the roadways in the unincorporated county are starting to see the effects. And so, you know, we're trying to, we're working with those challenges and trying to work with them out. But what we're, what we have right now is we have an estimated unfunded payment maintenance backlog of approximately $780 million right now. And so that's just accumulative effects of the insufficient pavement maintenance funds through the years. And so that's kind of been a challenge for us. And so as we deal with this large amount of payment that we maintain, we, we use a payment management system to assist staff in evaluating, tracking and ranking payment conditions of the various roads that we maintain. And so these roadways are assessed, they're each assessed and given what we call a payment condition index, otherwise known as a PCI. And so this PCI assessment gives a street a number basically between zero and 100. So for example, a street that has been recently paved would have a PCI index of closer to 100 versus a street that's worn down and in bad condition would be quite a bit of lower number. So right now, what we look at is any roadway below a 30 PCI is considered to be in poor condition. And currently, what we have is, we have a, you know, over 1,500 rows in the county with a PCI or under 30. And the overall average PCI of the county is about 50. But that will continue to decline without additional funds for road rehab. And what we're finding also is that the number of roadways under PC, 30 PCI is also, is also increasing. So that's kind of the challenges that we're dealing with right now. The other thing that's more recent and more new to us right now is that, you know, since March, with this new COVID-19 pandemic that's been, that's hit, we've had impacts to our budget because most people, well, a lot of people, at least initially, were not driving. You would drive on the freeways on the local roads and there was not many people on the roads. It was like a Sunday morning as you were driving out there. So because less people are driving, we're starting to, we started to see the impact in the revenues coming to our department from the gas tax. So it's impacting our budget to a certain extent. And so this summer, we've had to delay a couple of projects out to next year just because of that budget impact. And right now, we're not sure how long this impact's going to be because as we kind of look at things right now, like my kids, you know, or many other kids around are going to be starting distance learning. So parents aren't out there driving kids to school. They're not probably, many are working from home or staying home because of this pandemic for various reasons. are working from home or staying home because of this pandemic for various reasons. And so that's, like I said, that's had an impact. And so one of the things that we're doing now, as we're working through the limited funds for road maintenance, is that we're looking at basically streets with a PCI under 30 to look at fund with these larger overlay projects that we're looking at, because we do have a large amount of streets in that area right now that we decided that that's kind of the emphasis that we want to put right now. There's a continuous effort to try to get some additional funding from different venues, but that's kind of been the challenge, and that's been hit and miss. So hopefully, as we move into the future, there's some opportunities there. But like I said, that's been a challenge. One of the other ways, other than bigger overlay projects that we contract out for, we also have our maintenance staff out doing work, and so they're continuously outgoing to different streets around the county to fill potholes. But they're also out doing some more minor pavement repair in certain areas where we tend to have a lot of different potholes in the same vicinity. And so they've been out in Scott Road more recently to do some of that work, because we had some areas that needed some work, at least in the smaller areas. This pandemic has kind of put a break on some of our larger paving work, so we haven't been able to bring our pavers out yet because of this, and because we can't social distance as well as we would want to. So we're kind of putting a hold on that a little bit. But right now, what we're seeing is being able to, at least from our maintenance perspective, being able to handle some of the smaller areas that have the, like I said, more wear on them that we could kind of fix. And as you drive Scott Road more recently, you could probably see some of the areas that we have been able to fix. And then we, I think more recently also, when they were out there, they also were able to bring back up the shoulders, because I think we had some drops along some of the shoulders out there, but we're able to gravel those back up too a little bit. So I think that's kind of helped that situation also. So from a traffic perspective, I think I mentioned earlier there, and I think it's, you know, the issues that have come up in regard to traffic. So there's a couple of things, I think, that we've looked at, is one is accidents, and the other thing is speeds. Those are, I think, the two big things that come up from the community as far as the concerns out there. I think from my traffic perspective, from a volume perspective, you know, in the last few years, we've seen traffic volumes range from 2,500 to up to about 2,800. I think the more recent count is closer to 2,800 right now vehicles per day. And so that's kind of what we're seeing. And so, you know, as a result of the concerns, you know, the last few years, we went out to look at accidents on the street and identify where specifically we were seeing accidents to determine if we were seeing any patterns in certain areas so that we could find ways to mitigate them and reduce the number of accidents. And through this effort and working, and also, we were working with CHP on this effort, we were able to identify certain curves along this corridor where we said, hey, there's certain patterns of accidents here that were, we think with some additional warning signs, we could help reduce the number of accidents. And so we went through that effort, put up quite a few more signs out there, and it shows that, it showed, I think, afterwards that accidents at these locations were reduced. So the areas where we had patterns of accidents have reduced. The, I think the issue that we see out there is maybe the speeds are a little bit higher than they should be, where people are traveling at a little bit higher speed. So we tend to see runoff-the-road accidents. But in many locations, they're just spread out and not very much of a pattern. I think the locations that we found patterns, we were able to be able to deal with that with additional signs, and we found some reductions in there. And so as far as the speeding concerns, we have been working with CHP on that, and they have, like I said, been able to put some enforcement out there, some specific enforcement. There's some challenges on that street because of the nature of the roadway, but they've, you know, CHP has been very good to be able to help out in this matter. And from what they were telling me is that they will continue to coordinate special enforcement details to focus on the speeding issues, the distracted driving, and the DUIs that probably we see on that area. So I think the continued effort from CHP and their partnership with us has kind of really helped, and it'll make a big difference moving forward. And so, you know, as we move forward with some of this stuff, we continue to work with CHP to monitor Scott Road, but also a lot of the other streets that we have along in the county to monitor, like I said, the accidents and the different things that we do, because that's what we operate and maintain. So it's a continuous effort. It's not just we go out there one time and we deal with it. It's always a continuous effort, and we continue to work on that. So I will end my short presentation. I know we've been going long, and so I'll leave some room for some questions.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lupe. There's, you've had a number of questions. I'm gonna ask you a couple here, and then we'll move on to Derek, and then we'll come back as we have more time later on. The first question I have for you is, with the development in Folsom, we are seeing more and more large double tractor-type trucks trying to make these sharp turns. I've had personally watched these trucks and trailers get stuck and have to back up, turn, back up and turn to get around the corners. What can be done to limit the size of trailers on this rural road with rolling terrain and many sharp turns?
So that's one of the things that we started more looking recently at, in trying to identify the number of trucks coming through there. And so that's one of the things that we're continuing to do. We haven't, we haven't finished our review of that. And so once we come up with some mitigation, we'll probably be able to discuss some options that we can do in order to try to help that situation.
Great. I have a question from Teresa, who says, "I appreciate the pullouts for slower traffic on Scott Road. Is there an option for Jackson in the short term?" I guess that's actually a question for not you, Lupe. That's probably more of a question for Matt or Todd. Or maybe you. Does anybody have an answer to that?
Pullouts on Jackson?
Yes.
So, I think that's, you know, as development occurs in that area, and I'm not sure what area they're referring to, but if it's a developed area, you're gonna have multi-lanes now, so the pullouts wouldn't be needed. The other issue is that a lot of the Jackson Corridor is a Caltrans-maintained facility, so that would be something that Caltrans would need to identify a project for and move forward with. But that's an investigation that they would need to conduct for Jackson Highway specifically.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you one more question here, and then we'll move on to Derek. And that question is from John, who asks, "I understand the funding problems you were dealing with, but couldn't you get funding from the gravel operations along Scott Road to help generate funds to help improve that road?"
Matt, are you able to answer that one?
Yeah, I'm not sure the answer to that one. Yeah, I, that's one we'd have to report back. I don't, I don't want to try and guess an answer here. I don't know if that's a requirement of, I know that the question is talking about some of the East Quarry applications that are in right now, but I'd hate to speculate, say yes or no. So, can I have a to-do item? Come back?
Yeah, that's fine. And we had our first stumper, so good job, John. Let's ask a replacement question there, from a different John, who says, "We have data that shows a 20% increase in traffic on Scott since 2001. Rancho Marietta has had minimal development during this period. This is traffic from commuters. What do we do as the 3,000 trips becomes 4,000?"
So, you know, if you look at the volumes of Scott Road, yeah, there has been about a 600 vehicle per day increase during that time, basically from about 2011 or so to recent. And, you know, I think the question is, you know, where is development happening? It doesn't necessarily have to be in Rancho Marietta. It could be in the outlying areas around it, also more rural areas, or it just depends on where people are traveling back and forth to. If you look at 2,800 vehicles per day currently, for a two-lane roadway, that's not a high volume of traffic. If you look at other streets similar to like Dillard south of Jackson, they have about 4,500 vehicles per day. And so there's other streets that carry quite a bit more traffic, although, you know, Scott Road is a different street because it has the different hills and curves. But from a capacity perspective, you know, it's still a low number if you look at it from that perspective.
Okay. A lot of questions coming in, but let's go ahead and take some time to have Derek Minema come on. Derek works with the Southeast Capital Connector Expressway, and he's gonna give us a presentation on that. So, thank you, Derek.
Yeah, absolutely. You can hear me good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Derek Minema. I'm with the Connector Joint Powers Authority. The Joint Powers Authority is five agencies, it's multi-jurisdictional, five agencies. So we have the County of Sacramento, County of El Dorado, and then the cities of Elk Grove, Rancho Cordova, and Folsom. So what you see on your screen here is the adopted alignment of the Connector project. So it is essentially White Rock Road, Grantline Road, and then once you get west of Highway 99, it will be Camera Road down in the South Elk Grove area. So this is the alignment that has been adopted into the county's general plan. It's along the existing roads of Grantline and White Rock and Camera. It's also been adopted into the general plans for all the different cities as well. So this is the project, and as you can see, we do cross through State Route 16. Vance, if you could go through to the next slide, please. So this is a picture. I wanted to show you a little bit about what to expect when the Connector project is built. This is a picture of existing Grantline Road, and if you advance the slide once, you'll see a transition. This is what the project will look like after it's completed along Grantline Road. Vance, I don't know if you want to go back and do that one more time, just so people can get a feel of it, but that's the existing, and that's what it's gonna look like. So it's a divided road, four lanes, nice, modern shoulders, very safe design, utility poles located off the shoulder, off the edge of the road, and a nice, you know, modern facility that will move good amounts of traffic and have low congestion. So this is essentially what, a visualization of what to expect in the future as we move through project delivery and start to build the Connector project. What I want to do today is just give you a quick update on some work that we've recently accomplished, some work that's underway, and then some upcoming work as the Connector project advances. So if you drive Grantline Road on a regular basis, you may be aware of a recently installed traffic signal at Douglas Road. So this is a new traffic signal at Grantline and Douglas. The intersection was widened to accommodate left turns and right turns, and it's got some bicycle lanes. This is our most recent constructed improvement along the corridor. And so it's definitely a safer intersection and one that's improved operations at this very busy intersection. Go ahead to the next one. We're also doing some work right now. If you're driving along White Rock Road, we are actively relocating utility poles. We're clearing the right-of-way and moving poles off of the facility, off to the, to the south of the project. And so this is work that's being done by SMD. We also have some private contractors out there. And again, it's about a utility relocation work to get us ready for the next construction project that's coming along on White Rock. Go ahead and go to the next one. This is just a photo of the same type of work. So this is, again, White Rock Road. You can see off to the left of your screen, that's where we're putting those poles. We're putting them off the road in what we call a clear recovery area, right? So a good 30 feet off of the roadway when the roadway is improved. So that's a good improvement that we're working on right now. Go ahead to the next one. So this is our next big construction project. This is the reconstruction of White Rock Road between Prairie City and East Bidwell Street, just south of Highway 50 and near the city of Folsom. So this is a project that has just recently, we've had design been complete. We've got a right-of-way secured. The project is out to bid. So we will be opening construction bids next week. We're anticipating somewhere around between $25 and $30 million is the estimated construction cost as well as construction management. We're very proud of this project. It's, you know, underway. It's been needed for a long time. We'll be putting in traffic signals along this road as well, but it's a complete reconstruction of White Rock Road with, again, nice new facility, wider shoulders, and, you know, good, safe, updated facility along White Rock. And again, that's a project that's complete, and we're opening bids next week, and then we'll start construction later in the fall, winter. Most likely, you'll see a lot of heavy work start in the spring of 2021. Go ahead to the next one. This is also some work that is underway right now, but it's in the engineering phase. And so along White Rock Road is the connection of Scott Road. Scott Road is going to be relocated and connected to a new traffic signal at Prairie City Road. So that is a project that we know has a lot of interest out here in the stakeholder community. We've prioritized it in our budget, and we have, in the next couple of months, we're gonna be advancing this project, looking for those construction dollars, and the engineering work is something that we're doing really right now. It's a focus of our agency. So again, that is the realignment of the Scott Road intersection, which is right now hitting White Rock. We're gonna realign it over to Prairie City. It's a couple thousand feet of a realignment. And when we do that realignment, again, you're gonna be looking at a brand-new roadway facility with standard rural roadway shoulders. So, big improvement that is coming soon, definitely coming soon. Go ahead to the next one. Other direction. There you go. Okay, so, long-term, we are looking at Grantline Road from 16 up to White Rock. It's about 7.4 miles. The county, the JPA, Rancho Cordova, we've been working on this project for the last several years, and we're pleased to purport that both the SEQA document and the NEPA document, which are environmental from both the state and federal side, have been completed. They are, this project is now environmentally approved. And so that's a big milestone for us. It moves us into the next phase of doing engineering work, acquiring right-of-way, but looking for construction funds. So, at seven miles, it is a, quite an undertaking to upgrade Grantline Road, as you might imagine. And so we're constantly looking for additional funding to advance the engineering right-of-way and construction of this project. But the good news is that it has been environmentally approved, and we are moving into the next phase of project delivery. Go ahead to the next one. And so to look for funding, it's always a challenge, but right now, if you're familiar with this area of Grantline Road, there is a very sharp curve near some of those rock quarry plants. And just last week, we submitted a grant funding application to the state of California to advance engineering design to reconstruct this curve. So, under a recently adopted gas tax funding program by the state called Senate Bill 1, they've identified funding for what we call rural freight projects. And so that's where we're competing. We're competing up and down the state, but we think we have a really great application, because right here in this location, you may know there are some safety concerns in this area. It's a very old road that was not designed for today's big, heavy trucks and the volumes of traffic that we're seeing. So if we're successful, this will be something that will start to advance into engineering design, which is the reconstruction of this curve on Grantline Road, or northerly near White Rock Road. So, that's a little bit of what we have been doing, what we are doing, and what's upcoming. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Hedges.
Thank you, Derek. We have a question here directly for you. Let me make sure my mic's on. It is. And it says, "In early seatback conversations, we are led to assume that the connector would go over SR 16 or vice versa. At present, this is controlled by a signal. That can't be good news, directing a superhighway with a traffic light at Grantline. It's also the dump." More of a comment, but I think maybe you can comment on it?
Sure, sir. So, the county's general plan does identify that intersection as a grade-separated intersection, right? So, it hasn't been determined if Grantline will go over Jackson or Jackson will go over Grantline, but it is shown in the county's general plan to be grade-separated. The timing of that is really the question of funding and the advancement of the project. When we start to look at grade-separated intersections, costs are generally much more expensive than just a typical traffic signal. So, it is shown to be grade-separated, it is shown to go over or under, but it's really a matter of timing of when that will occur, and I don't know, as it will depend a lot on our ability as it will depend a lot on our ability to attract funding and the need for the project. But it's a really good question.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna, I've been saving up questions throughout from people asking them, so I'm going to go ahead and ask questions for the, for the four of you. Let's start with a question from JD. This is for Lupe about Scott Road. "Regarding the signs you mentioned, there were roadway safety signs placed approximately one year ago and new striping. However, the signs have since been removed. Did the county remove them, or did someone else?" Lupe, can, can you, you're muted, Lupe.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. So the county did not remove the signs. Actually, CHP had recently brought that up to us as far as having some signs missing. And so staff is working now to try to identify which signs they are so we can get those back in place.
Okay, thank you, Lupe. Got a question. I think this is probably from Matt, but I had several questions about this, but I'm kind of consolidate them all into one. But it's, when, when did the relinquishment program for Jackson Highway get abandoned?
I, I, I'm not privy to that. I just know that it's not, it's not going on right now, and we're not operating that way. We're operating under the assumptions that we're going to be going through the Caltrans accretion process.
Thank you. Matt, I think this one's probably for you as well. It goes back to a specific slide. Hopefully, you know what it's talking about. But it says, "Are the fifth and sixth lanes for mixed flow vehicles or reserved for express transit?" Are you familiar with what that's referring to?
No. Kind of depends on what road.
No worries. Whoever, I, I think that was asked by, let me see, it was asked by John. So John, if you have, if you have more specificity, go ahead and mention it in the comments. But I'll, I'll go, I'll move on here.
I mean, there are, there are, I mean, sorry, I'm not gonna, I, I don't think I can ask the questions. I know we have queue jumps at some of the intersections for transit, but I don't think that's what the question was. So, and a queue jump basically is the ability for transit traveling through the corridor to kind of get to the front of the line, and then when it turns green to go first. But I, I don't think that's the question.
Oh, this is Todd. I'll, I'll try to answer if I, if it's correct that the, the comment is referring to Jackson Highway, then the fifth and sixth lanes, I don't think would be explicitly reserved solely for transit and like a, a, a express route, given the volume of traffic that's moving in both directions. I think the additional lanes, fifth and sixth lanes are needed for the, all the vehicles.
Yes, that's accurate.
Thank you. I have a question from John, who says, "16,500 transit boarding per day will reduce some trips, but 30,000 homes will generate up to 10 vehicle trips per day. How will four lanes on SR 16 handle that load? What other mitigation strategies for handling the traffic are you considering?"
Well, I assume we're talking about four, I mean, ultimately, the road, Jackson, like I said, west of Grantline will be a six lane facility. So widening the road, it'll handle those trips. If we're talking about east, four lanes east of Grantline for the general plan, like, like I said earlier, the, the, and I think Todd sort of helped me clarify the trips that are anticipated to come from this development and that were put in the model, and the model told us where these trips go. They're not, they're not the ones that are traveling east of Grantline. They get to Grantline, and then they disperse north and south to the extent that impacts east from traffic from this project, we don't think is significant. That's how I'll answer that.
Okay. We've got another one for you. It's from John. I swear these aren't all the same John. There's like five Johns in here, so. But this one says, "Bradshaw Road is already a level service F intersection. Can you honestly say that to us that you can mitigate this intersection from east to west in a way that will make it anything more than what it already is, a level F?"
I assume you said that was for me, Matt. You cut out, but that, that's in my wheelhouse.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli kind of mentioned the fact that we don't, we don't, since we're talking about that specific Bradshaw-Jackson corridor, we already know, we being the county, already know that there's a need there. So, so separate from the whole development process and mitigation measures, the county is advancing a capital project coming out of our design side of the house that, that'll be delivered in 2022 that will help improve that now. And then putting that back aside, the development, if this gets approved and moved forward, we'll have responsibility to do improvements and ultimately make that a six by six intersection. So, yeah.
Excellent. I have got a question, a few questions here for Lupe in a row. I'll start with a question from Bruce that says, "Would it be possible to raise Scott Road at Deer Creek, install larger culverts to mitigate flooding? We all know that bridge would be outrageously expensive. Raising Scott Road would be cost effective." Let me make sure Lupe's not muted.
I'm muted again.
No worries.
So that has been, that question has been brought up in the past, and I think that one of the issues with that location is that it's, it's a big challenge, you know. By one point, I think there was some look at possibly doing a bridge. But because of the floodplain levels and the, where it's at, I think it needed to be quite a bit of long of a bridge. And so since then, staff has looked at other types of options, but funding for these other options might not, you know, it's a struggle to try to get funding for that, just raising that. But it still has a big environmental review. It has a big process along to it, so it becomes a big expensive project either way. And so I think that's always kind of been a challenge out there. We're always looking to figure out if there's a best way to solve that. But like I said, that, that has been a challenge just because of the cost of that type of project.
Thanks, Lupe. We've got about 10 more minutes here, so let's keep on rolling with the questions. Another one for you, Lupe. This one's from JD, and it said, it's a little bit of a long one, so bear with me. "Scott Road is just about every roadway design no-no that AASHTO lists in their design manual." I assume you maybe know what that is. "Offset vertical and horizontal curves, tight or no shoulders, stopping sight distance, passing sight distance, low K value vertical curves, no superelevations or reverse supers, too small horizontal radii. At what point do these costs of accidents, safety risks, damage to vehicles, maintenance, and operation outweigh the put it off tomorrow approach?"
So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we are continuously looking at these locations and trying to figure out ways to improve it. Like I said, we have noted that there's been some accidents out there, and we have been able to make some reduction in that. And I think that's a continuous effort that we're gonna continue to make along with CHP in order to make those improvements out there. So it's not like we're waiting for tomorrow. We're continuously making that effort to work and identify ways to make those improvements out there.
Thank you. Lupe, Linda, Linda has asked, "What is Scott Road's PCI?" I'm guessing that there's probably got various PCIs to it, but can you answer that?
Yeah, because it is a long segment, I think it averages up in the upper 40s as far as the PCI level, PCI goes. I know there's some bad spots in certain areas, but when you look at the PCI, it looks like, it looks at the overall roadway condition. But even though some of these, some of the roadway has spots where are bad, you still see a little bit higher PCI because overall the roadway is good. And I think that's why we're looking right now because of the funding situation that we're trying to be able to deal with the small areas that have the pothole issues. And that's kind of what you see. And I think one of the other questions that came out was, well, why are these areas a little rougher? And I think the answer to that is because we're haven't really been, as I mentioned before, we haven't been able to get the paper out to do the nicer, longer, smooth paving. We were able to skin patch it so that we were able to social distance and do the work out there at us, with a smaller scale and not do a little bit longer. So in those cases, although you see an improvement, it's not as smooth as it could be if we had the paper out there.
Excellent. Thanks, Lupe. Also have a user that says, "Please thank, please thank Lupe. He has a tough job. Rural roads and no money." So thank you, Lupe. I want to move over to Derek. There's a question that says, "The capital southeast connector funding was already approved by taxpayers. Where did that money go instead?"
Yeah, okay. That's a great question. So in 2004, Sacramento County taxpayers approved a program called Measure A, and Measure A went into effect in 2009, and it's a half cent sales tax to fund transportation improvements. So far, the JPA, the Connector projects received about $40 million, and that's a good chunk of change. We've done some good work with that. It's, 40 million is, is a nice chunk of change, but we also have 30 miles of roadway to apply it to. So what we try to do with our funding strategies is take the local sales tax dollars and leverage them for state and federal grants to the best of our ability. So if you look along the entire 34 mile Connector project, you'll see a lot of improvements that have been built. For example, at Highway 50 in Eldorado County, there's a brand new interchange, Silver Valley Parkway Interchange, that is a new connection to Highway 50. The same thing down in Elk Grove at 99, the Grantline Road 99 interchange is a brand new interchange. We took Grantline Road in Elk Grove, and we raised it up and over the railroad tracks. White Rock Road between Grantline and Prairie City was completely reconstructed. Many people love that project out in this area. So Grantline Road, excuse me, White Rock Road reconstructed the four lanes. So we've been doing a lot of work, and we do it with the money that we have, and we leverage it to the best of our ability to collect those state and federal grants. One thing that is a challenge, especially with sales taxes and development fees, when we, when this program came online in 2009, that's right when we saw a major dip in the economy. And so, you know, plans change when the revenue that you're anticipating doesn't really materialize. But again, $40 million so far has been collected from that sales tax. It's been put to good use.
Thank you. And I'm supposed to thank you and Don Natoli for your work in helping move the Scott Road Prairie City intersection forward. Don, I actually have a question for you, in a way, and that, that question is, "Given the negative traffic impacts coming from these projects, is Sacramento County seriously considered light rail to Rancho Marietta as a safe, efficient, and healthier mitigation?" And I'm asking you because I believe you sit on the RT board.
I do. No, I don't think that's, that, that hasn't been considered, and I would, as you say, probably won't be. I know that certainly bus service, which again is not the same as having fixed rail, but fixed rail is very expensive per mile to build and doesn't give you the flexibility depending upon traffic patterns and changes in, in, in people's destinations to, to adjust that quickly. But I, but I know that bus services, Todd pointed out earlier, is contemplated to be significantly improved. And the whole idea is obviously to connect to light rail, and whether it's up the Sunrise Corridor, up the WAC Corridor, and certainly a little more circuitous, but, you know, to Folsom. Again, you know, who knows what the future will bring, but that's not a part of the, the overall plan. But improving public transit to Rancho Marietta, and I know that the bus service with the East County Services, we actually have folks from out of county, Eldorado, Amador, and, and, and beyond that, you know, connect to that service. Again, it's, it's limited, but I do think that you're going to see as modes of travel are improved upon, and obviously, people in their own vehicles is, is, is a primary mode right now. But we will see some improvements, and I know regional transit has been a part of the planning, as Todd pointed out, to improve it through the corridor, and I, and I would have to imagine that it will, you know, that will extend to the Rancho Marietta and eastern portion of the county as well. But light rail, that's not been in the improvement plans.
Thank you. So we're, we're running close on time here. I want to make a couple of comments in saying, you, you see on the screen, there's, you can ask questions directly to the participants here. You can also email them to supervisorfrost@satcounty.net. We'll make sure they go to the right place. And before closing down, I want to see if there's any closing comments that Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Frost might want to make.
Man, I would just thank you for your work, and I'll let Sue have the final comments. I, I just wanted to note, we did have Lieutenant Johnson from the CHP. So if you had, I don't, if you had any questions regarding, you know, enforcement and so forth, but they've been a good partner in all of the Scott Road, but certainly in Jackson Corridor. And I, I want to just express thanks to her and to her men and women that, you know, keep our roads safe and respond to accidents and critical calls. But, you know, I want to thank our staff, certainly you, Matt, and Supervisor Frost for coordinating. I know we're, this was five months at least in the planning since, since we had to defer on it. But your office, working with county staff and with Derek and others, have really put together a good program in the CV. Hopefully, it was enlightening for folks, informative, and as you said, there's ways to continue to ask questions, whether it's of Supervisor Frost or myself, or certainly those folks who are on the call today or, or others as well. So thanks to all who participated. And again, this is a format that's a little clunky for me, but I'm, I, I, I actually saw myself re- yaw when I got, got cut off here. So anyway, thanks again.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Frost, do you have any comments to close things out?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for coming. Thank you for your thoughtful questions. Thank you to all the presenters and to others like Lieutenant Commander Robin Johnson, and I think there were some folks from Department of Transportation in Amador County that were here. And so I know, you know, sometimes growth is hard, and, and the cost associated with keeping up with growth is difficult. But we're, at the county, we're doing our best. The idea is that as the growth happens, hopefully, we'll be able to meet those challenges and fund them. And so we appreciate that you folks were willing to make yourself, your emails available. So if people have follow-up questions, and you can always contact Supervisor Natoli or myself and get ahold of our office, and if there's anything we can answer or help with. And thank you, everyone, for, for being here tonight. I hope it was helpful in, in informing everyone as, of the progress as we move forward. So thank you, Matt, for doing all-
Thank you. And 7:30 on the dot. This is fantastic. Thank you, everybody, and I hope you all have a great evening.
Drive safely.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.